Welcome back to our afternoon session. We are going to go into a training session with our prosecuting attorney's office to discuss recent case law regarding Lupa. So, all yours.
Okay. So, the Supreme Court just dropped another decision on Lupa. You may have seen some news coverage on this particular case. It's out of Boise, City of Boise and Interfaith Sanctuary. With this case following the Northwest Neighborhood Association, which was also a Boise City case from 2023, it would be a good idea to just check bases and talk about the case, questions that you might have related to these cases and our process and kind of some lessons learned from reading these cases. The best thing we can do is, you know, learn the lesson from the mistakes that someone else is making instead of making them our own. I think the best way to go about this particular training.
Because Neil's not here and I want him to be able to hear all of this. We make sure that you're either using that mic if you can get as close to you.
Because I think the PNC commissioners will be watching it also.
Yeah. So, we'll offer, we'll offer training. I mean, it's good that they'll watch this, but we'll also offer training for the Planning and Zoning Commission if they're interested in going over the cases and we can have a question and answer session with them as well. I don't want to talk about any of our cases or anything that's pending here. So, we won't make any correlations to decisions that you have in front of you related to these cases, but we can talk about what Boise City did, primarily why the case went the way it did and what they could have done differently to get a different outcome.
I just emailed you after that. I just want to make sure someone was invited to the executive later.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
So, first off, let's talk about the most recent. That's the Interfaith Sanctuary case. We sent these cases around, asked everybody to read them. Let's start with questions and then maybe I'll quiz you a little bit about what you're, what you, what you read and what you learned and we'll kind of get a gauge on where, where we're at.
I went through these. I'll start if you want me to.
Sure.
I went through the thing that first popped out. I got all kinds of orange, so I might be. So, the site was zoned, the C2D, the commercial, the design review, which within that zone, it allows shelter homes.
Does, yep.
However, there was nothing in the comp plan that explicitly states that shelters may only exist in downtown Boise, because that's where the comp plan, the comp plan had stated they should be located in downtown Boise, but this zone allowed it. And so, you know, you would think a CUP, a conditional use permit, would have allowed this to occur in this zone.
Yeah.
And it specifically states throughout this that the comp plan is a guiding document. It's not what's actually driving this decision. So, that kind of jumped out at me that, you know, since we're only one zone and we're doing CUPs, that just because the comp plan says one thing, it doesn't necessarily negate the fact that you can do something else.
Right.
And that was kind of reaffirmed. You know what? Reading their documents, I was going through this, going, okay, are they, are they saying this is a good thing or a bad thing? Because half the time I thought they were in support of Boise and half the time I thought they were against them.
Right, right.
So, but they did specifically call out that because the site was controversial and do a lot of public attention. Let's see. Oh, they'd asked for them to pause their consideration in order for them to go in and do a side deal and that that kind of was an unusual ask, to ask somebody to stop what's currently in place so that they can
Yeah.
do a change. And I thought that probably wasn't, wasn't appropriate unless you're putting a moratorium on or something. And they didn't really do a moratorium. They just asked them to withdraw it. So, that raised kind of a red flag for me.
Yeah. So, you're, you're focusing on some, some, some pretty important facts or issues in the case. One that I think is kind of jumped off the page at me was this was, this application was originally submitted to the city in 2021. So, we're, it, we're talking about a four-year process. And like you're pointing out, during the middle of that process, the city council asked for the applicant to basically suspend its application so they could convene this working group. I'm sure it was in anticipation of the controversy that was going to surround this, the citing of this new Interfaith Sanctuary and the homeless shelter not necessarily being centered in the, centered in the city itself or in the downtown area, the way the comprehensive plan suggests that it should be. So, I think what they were trying to do was resolve or work out some of those issues. What ultimately happened was it didn't, it didn't result in that. The Northwest Neighborhood Association still adamantly opposed the issuance of the CUP. So, I think what that illustrates is that these applications can take a long time if, if there's controversy that needs to be resolved or if there is additional information that is needed in order for the council, in your case, the board, to make an informed decision. So, they, they took a lot of time, still ended up with an outcome that I'm sure the city is disappointed in.
Well, I take that to mean to us that you can't just wish that something was different, that you have to, your judicial review, if you will, your, your decision has to be based on what's fact at the time that your application comes in. You can't just wait and hope something changes in the meantime and then base your decision, you know, three years later.
Yeah.
I mean, this review board, it didn't sound like they had changed any of their underlying zoning codes or any of their ordinances or anything else. They just had this citing committee kind of that, you know, these are the areas that these things should happen in.
Yeah.
They didn't change anything within their code, nor could they really.
Yeah.
They already had an application on the board.
But, I mean, it's pretty evident that the city was, was supportive of the application and maybe even a little bit biased. The court didn't come out and say that, but they were certainly supportive of, of that because they, what you read in the press as well as the facts that, that did come through in the case was that they had seen a surge in the demand for these kinds of services. The homeless shelter that was in, that was located in the downtown area was, was being, you know, overwhelmed with, with people. And so, the need, the demand for the service was there and the need for this kind of a facility was there. And so, maybe they were willing to look, look past some of their ordinance requirements that were there in order to get something approved, even though the, the ordinances may not have supported the, the actual location. But I think there's one key fact that I think we need to circle back to and, and talk about first and maybe to set this up. One of the similarities between this case and the other case is the Planning and Zoning Commission originally recommended denial on this, on this application. And so, there was a difference, there was a difference in what the outcome of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision was and the city council's decision was. Now, in Boise City Code, they have an ordinance that requires if the city council is going to make a, is going to reverse the planning and zoning decision, then they have to give a pretty detailed explanation and illustrate how the Planning and Zoning Commission got it wrong. So, that was one of the key issues that, one of the key issues that the court justified in turning it over. We don't need to spend a whole lot of time on that because we don't have, we don't have the same requirement in our code, except for it's always a good idea if the, if the board is seeing things differently than the Planning and Zoning Commission is, to explain how and why you see it differently and what elements of the ordinance you feel like the Planning and Zoning Commission got wrong. The, the court in this case, in the Interfaith case, basically said that there was not enough of detail or not enough explanation for the court to be able to analyze why the city council saw it differently than the Planning and Zoning Council did. So, then it just ultimately what it amounted to was a difference of opinion.
And if we go back and look, not at cases that are pending before us right now, but in the past, so the ones that I disagreed with on the city council, I went back to the comp plan and I broke down exactly where I thought they were reading the comp plan differently than I was reading the comp plan. And so, I don't know if that is, you know, it's not related to the ordinance because honestly, I don't remember there being a disagreement in the ordinance, but it was almost where I thought Planning and Zoning was making a decision and a recommendation based upon their reading of the comp plan and not where we met the ordinance. So, I was pretty detail oriented
Yeah.
and how I read the comp plan differently. The comp plan's the guiding document. It's not our ordinance. So, my question for you is, do we need to, for our process in the future, I mean, Cindy has been doing a great job about listing, if there's 15 individuals that give us their disagreement or, you know, their negative, read on things. She is synopsizing those and then we are, we are actually recording where either we've gotten data that counteracts what they're stating or how it, how it, you know, goes to our comp plan or our ordinance. But I don't remember really breaking down, this is where I disagree with Planning and Zoning Commission. So, is that the process we need to strengthen, not, not just reading it, you know, that I think you're wrong in the comp plan, but I also think you're wrong in reading the ordinance.
Right.
I don't remember doing that.
Yeah. So, based on this case and the Northwest Neighborhood Association case, yes, I think we can and should put some time and some attention into, into improving those processes. The, the thrust, I, I mean, these two cases, you can almost put these side by side when it comes to what the court's criticism of the governing body's decision was. And that was, one, I think the best way to describe it is that a declaration or just reciting something that was in the, in the, in the, in the hearing, in the public hearing, that is not, that is not evidence and that is not a finding of fact. Finding a fact that you are required to find is you have to resolve the dispute between the factual allegations that are being made. In Interfaith, the Northwest Neighborhood Association said this, citing this homeless shelter in our neighborhood is going to have such a severe impact on our property values and our quality of life that it will basically violate the ordinance that says this, and we have something similar in our ordinance that says, won't place an undue burden on adjacent, adjacent properties. That was their opinion. The Interfaith Sanctuary countered that with, we don't think it's going to have that, that big of an impact and in addition to that, reasonable conditions can bring it into compliance. And so, the conditions, conditions of approval can minimize or mitigate the impact on the neighbors. Now, the reason that the Boise City Council lost this case is because they didn't explain enough detail to the court which, which side they chose and, and why. And that's where I think they fell short.
So, and that was a question I had, I had highlighted that also. They alleged intense adverse impacts. So, and anybody can allege anything they want.
Sure.
It didn't tell us what documentation and data they actually provided
Right.
to, to make that assumption. And so, as, as we're listing these, you know, the impacts that the public is bringing up and we're trying to mitigate, it didn't really tell me how much data was behind that. And that's what I'm asking for, if anybody's listening, we need data. We don't just need you to come and say, this is going to happen to me. Where's the data behind that?
Right.
And that's where I think that, you know, we, we have had some strength recently is we have data, we have traffic data, we have, you know, actual things that mitigate that allegation of impact.
Right.
What I'm hearing you say is, we just need to be much more thorough in describing what that data is.
Yeah.
How we're going to mitigate that.
So, let's, let's scrutinize that fact and I'm, I'm kind of leading you to, to a certain point in this and that is that you go back to the planning and zoning hearings in this particular case, one of the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for from the applicant was a security plan. Remember that, remember that when you read that. They said, okay, we've got this allegation from the Neighborhood Association, this is going to be a huge impact on our neighborhood. So, we want you to give us, we want you to give us a security plan. And I think one of the big mistakes Interfaith made was they refused to do that. It's, it's interesting. It's interesting because it's true that their ordinance didn't require that. That was not something that the, you were going to put in a, a regular application, but, but the Planning and Zoning Commission saw that this is going to be a really big issue and they needed to, they needed to get this additional detail from the applicant. I want to, I want to spend some time on that issue right there. It was not the Planning and Zoning's commissions, it wasn't the, it wasn't their job to resolve that. They, they correctly recognized that the burden is on the applicant, not necessarily on the Planning and Zoning Commission to do the applicant's job for them and to reason away the concerns of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. They said, this is what we feel like you need to submit to us so we can determine whether or not we can adequately mitigate the concerns that are being raised to us. And they says, no, we're not going to do that because your ordinance doesn't require it. So, they said, well, in that case, and this is why Planning and Zoning voted no or to recommend denial on this was because they said, we don't know what conditions to put on this particular project because we can't evaluate a, a security plan that doesn't exist or, or refuses. Now, Boise City Council looked at it, said, well, the code doesn't require it, the ordinance doesn't require it. We didn't ask for that in the application, so we're not going to require you to do it. And that's where I think things just went south for, for this particular decision. The Supreme Court basically said, in the absence of having that additional information, there is no basis for being able to determine what, what reasonable conditions you can place on the property to minimize the, the impact to, to the neighbors.
And they also had professionals bring data. I mean, the Boise Police Department came in and said, this is, you know, this is what we currently have as far as
Crime statistics.
and then this is what it's, you know, could become. So, they actually had professionals
Right.
bring a report
Yep.
and they did nothing to mitigate that report.
Yep. So, I think, I, I think one of the learning lessons there is we shouldn't be shy to ask the applicant to bring additional information. I, that there was a reasonable request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to say, hey, we've got a whole bunch of neighbors here, a lot of them, that are very concerned about crime in the neighborhood and, and some of the negative impacts that this particular project's going to have. So, what is it that you're going to do, you know, as far as, as far as a, a security plan to, to minimize some of that? And, and the fact that they refused to do that, I, I agree, was probably one of the central reasons why this case went the way that it went.
But it would have to be something valid, not just, it's going to negatively affect my quality of life. It has to be something.
Well, but, but in this situation, that's, there was more than just that. They had statistics, they had, you know, they had some, they, they had some real issues in the, in the record from both the law enforcement agencies as well as, you know, studies and books. Right.
So, that brings a question too. So, in our process, we always mail out to every agency. Come on in. We got started a little bit early, so not certain if you guys are here for the discussion on the lawsuits.
Just interested.
So, in our process, we always mail out requests for information to every agency that's out there. And Cindy sometimes gets a response, most times doesn't get a response. So, we take that as an automatic, no concern
Right.
if you don't respond. In this case, they had specific data
Yeah.
from those agencies. So, if we were to get specific data from agencies that said, you know, this is a high nitrate area, we don't want septic, we of course would have to mitigate that before we would ever place something there.
Mm-hmm.
But, or if we get something from the fire department that says, this is so steep, we can't, you know, do, or fight fires there, that would be something we would have to mitigate based on this court
Right.
hearing before we'd be able to do anything.
Yeah.
But isn't, is it acceptable to, to say, we've given out, you know, your opportunity to speak and you haven't given us anything or their standardized letters, doesn't DQ's letter, I think, says the same thing every time? Is that okay? We've given them the opportunity to speak. I mean, you can't go out and poll information from agencies if they won't respond.
Right.
School districts never responded to anything.
I mean, universally, universally, I, I wouldn't say yes necessarily. If you have a specific issue that you need additional information on and the best source of that information is from the fire district or for the EMS district or, or somewhere else, I, I, what I would always recommend in those situations is take the necessary time to get those experts in that area to come and address, address your question, you know.
So, follow up to that though, along that, that thinking. So, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
Somebody brings up, you know, this might be a concern for fire mitigation.
Right.
And we have given the fire department the opportunity to speak to that and they haven't given any response, then I'm going to make an assumption that they disagreed with that individual that's making that assumption. If they can't provide, if I have, if I have data, if I have something that's solid that says there have been five fires in this neighborhood in the last five years, then I can go back to the fire department and say, hey, is this factual?
Yeah.
And how would, you know, something additional here create a situation?
Yeah.
But when it's an allegation of something and there's nothing documented with it, at what moment, you know, do I need to go and say, you need to respond to this?
So, let's take the Northwest Neighborhood Association decision to, to address that question because I do think it, it was, it was about that kind of a question. So, you know, basically you're saying that you, you can, you can hear just generally speaking, concerns about, about, you know, what's the, what's the fire risk or the fire danger? Is this going to put existing homes in the neighborhood at risk of, of not getting the services it needs because it'll be overwhelmed by the additional development, which is, which is a general question. And you can, you can judge the veracity of those statements based on whether there's some expertise behind that, there's some personal experience behind that. And if the answer to that is yes, then you, you need to consider that. You need to consider whether that's a legitimate, that's legitimate or that's more of a biased statement in general, just in, in general opposition to the, to the application. You, that's what your job is, is to judge the veracity of those statements. But in Northwest Neighborhood Association, it got down, right down to the specifics where, again, in the comprehensive plan, there was a, there was a goal. It wasn't a requirement, but it was a goal that was stated that for all, for all residents within Boise City limits, that the, the emergency response time would be four minutes or less, which means that there's going to have to be a fire station within four minutes of, of each new development. That's where they got high centered, was that issue with the comprehensive plan. Again, here's two cases that illustrate that you can't just ignore the goals in the comprehensive plan. You have to address those. Those, those are legitimate requirements that are there. Don't, don't misinterpret what I'm saying. These are not becoming black and white ordinance, ordinance level requirements. You still have to, you still have to follow the ordinance, but you, you don't just brush away the goals of the comprehensive plan. They have to be, they have to be addressed somehow.
I bet Boise's rewriting their comprehensive plan to be a lot more vague.
Potentially so, but let's, but, but let's talk about that. It, it wasn't, it wasn't that in Northwest Neighborhood Association, it wasn't necessarily that there wasn't a fire station within four minutes that, that killed that deal. It was the Boise City Council's lack of explanation for why they felt like this could still proceed when you have a goal that seems to be contrary to that. There was all sorts of testimony in the record about, well, we have these, we have these informal agreements with Eagle and if we, and if we all participate together, then it does meet the four-minute fire response time. But those, those agreements were never reduced to an actual MOU and, and, and the problem was, the problem wasn't the decision necessarily, it was the lack of explanation or why they decided to approve it. So, if the city would have said, we're going to approve this, but we want to acknowledge the goal that's in the comprehensive plan of four minutes, but here's why we think that it's okay. One, we've had testimony from both the Eagle Fire Chief and the Boise Fire Chief that we work together and, you know, if they would have went and took, taken the time to, to evaluate the evidence, make the necessary findings of fact, then, then the outcome probably would have been different there. So, does that, I mean, does that make sense? I know this is, there's a lot of legal ease in all of this. What other questions did you have?
I guess I do. So, the comp plan is a guiding document. We've talked about this before, that you can cherry pick both ways out of it sometimes, correct?
Well, yeah, you can, but you also have, you have codified kind of the process of interpreting the comprehensive plan in your ordinance. Your ordinance in both, in, in your CUP section says, here's how we're going to achieve the goals that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, is we're going to ensure that there's, there's a list of no undue adverse impact on the environment, no undue adverse impact on government services, no undue adverse impact. Now, a lot of similarities between what we're seeing in the Boise City Code with what Valley County has, they're kind of universal requirements. And, and so, if you are feeling confused about how best to deal with or address issues within the comprehensive plan, look to that section right there. Undue adverse impact on the environment, government services, adjacent property owners, what am I missing? I think wildlife. And then, and then there's this, basically this universal statement of must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So,
But I think, just to dumb it down for me, what we get a lot of, at least the PNC level, is what doesn't preserve our agricultural heritage or preserve our small town atmosphere? And then you look in other places of the comp plan, most diversity of housing. I think that's kind of the cherry picking, I mean, depends upon, I mean, because it basically says two different things. One says, don't do anything and one says, we need housing.
Yeah. So, that's where, you know, if you come back to the, the general themes in these two cases, it's this. Understand understand the difference. You, you need to understand the difference between. Maybe that's not the right way to frame this. The best way to frame this is you need to know how to make an appropriate finding of fact. And, and that means as you proceed through the application process and the public hearing process, you have to identify where the disputes are between the parties. And then you got to, you got to reconcile that and say, I'm making a finding of fact on X which supports approval or, or I'm making a finding of fact on Y. or, or I'm making a finding of fact on Y that supports denial of this application. And you've got to be able to, and you've got to be able to have evidence to support that and an explanation for why.
That's the bottom line for me. We continually get, you don't listen to us. And it's not that we don't listen to the public. It is they are bringing arbitrary information. It's, it's feelings, it's emotion, it's not fact. I mean, if we were, if I were to go out and, and lead a group against a project, it would be, you would bring me facts, documented facts for what you're telling me. And we get very little of that.
Some, yeah, sometimes, yeah.
So what we really need is, you know, I mean, a developer, and, and I think this is going to be an education on both sides of this conversation. Because development needs to do a better job also of documenting everything that, you know, they've heard in those initial meetings. We, we actually have an initial meeting now. And they need to listen to the constituents that they are meeting with and listen to their concerns.
Yep.
And then they need to document why either, you know, they disagree with that concern or show us what, you know, how, how it, they can mitigate those concerns.
Right.
It's, that's to me is the, the evidence, the substantial evidence on the record is what we need. And we need to do a better job, maybe, or frankly, I think that we've been doing a pretty good job with documenting our facts and conclusions. The information that we have, and especially since Cinda started breaking down, you know, all of the list of the concerns and how we're going to mitigate those concerns. I think that that has helped a lot in our process. And certainly having two attorneys on the team to actually look at the facts and conclusions with us has certainly helped the process.
So if you take, if you take the Interfaith Sanctuary issue and, and kind of apply it to the conversation we're having right here. The Northwest Neighborhood Association submitted some studies about crime in and around homeless shelters. I think they got good participation from the Boise City Police Department and the Boise City Fire Department. So there was testimony in the record there. And so, so there was, so there was some good evidence in the record to evaluate that. And the Planning and Zoning Commission asked the applicant to provide really a written response in the form of, what is the security plan that you're going to implement if this is approved? So we can determine whether or not your security plan will be sufficient to address these issues that have been raised. So everything up until that point seemed to be going right on track, doing exactly what the, what Lupa would contemplate, what you would require. Your, you know, the, the city council was, was, you know, not necessarily weighing in on that they're leaning one way or the other. We just need the information so we can evaluate it and make that determination. And, and then it just came down to, I think, the court's been very frustrated with decisions that have come out of governing bodies on these land use decisions where they just do an inadequate, it's just inadequately attempting to explain what the rationale was for the decision that they made. So this is more deliberations. So as you deliberate on decisions, that's where you can help add to that record. And, and then, I mean, these are so complex and you're going to have multiple public hearings most of the time and a lot of evidence in the record. There's no way that you're going to be able to just articulate verbally all of the findings of fact. That's what, that's why you're required to have a written decision. So, but if you can, you know, give some indication, you know, I'm, I'm leaning towards approving the Interfaith Sanctuary even though we don't have a security plan, that's where you have to explain why. Why are you willing to approve this homeless shelter in the Northwest Neighborhood Association? Even though there's no, there's no security plan in the record? Why would you be willing to approve that? That's where I think the case went south for the city of Boise, is they didn't explain it. They just said.
A lot about reasoned statements. But that's not really facts and conclusions. They're talking about reasoned statement. Are we doing reasoned statements?
Yeah, trying to.
Okay. Thousands of hours on every application. Now we know why. Because you either do it upfront or you do it afterwards.
But that's the point right there that the court's emphasizing is that give the reason so the court doesn't have to guess what your rationale was for, for how you have applied the facts to the ordinance. And the ordinance that applied in this case was, just like we have in ours, is there going to be an undue adverse impact on the Northwest Neighborhood Association, the affected parties? And two, is this going to put an undue burden on, they use the term public facilities. We call it government services, but they're one in the same. So is this going to place, is this going to place a burden on fire, police, EMS that would overwhelm them? And if so, what, if any conditions can you impose to mitigate those impacts?
But again, you have to have that input.
Have to have the input.
That they have the police department and the fire department.
If you don't have the input, if you don't have the input, you're, you're kind of behind the eight ball.
We have, we have some of the statements, you know, it's going to, it's going to decrease my property value. Some of those that, you know, there is no evidence ever provided that it's actually going to decrease somebody's property value.
A lot of times we've had stuff that it shows, it's going to show that it's going to increase.
They're, they're concerned that it's going to increase their property value. But even if you, you know, I don't know if you correct me if I'm, if you don't agree. When you're going through your deliberations after you've closed public hearings, if you just go down through the list of the concerns of the neighbors and state why you agree, you, you disagree, or a condition that's going to mitigate that impact. And then leave it up to your council and your staff to put it, put together that written document. But you say it and we'll have to put it together.
So if the, it, if someone from the Northwest Neighborhood Association came to the public hearing and said, this is going to decrease my property values. That is a perfect opportunity during the public hearing to say, what do you base that on? And ask, ask them to testify, what, what is their, why do they believe that it's going to a homeless shelter in the neighborhood? And if they say, well, that's just how I understand property values to work, then you can say, well, that, that's really just a kind of conclusory statement that isn't really grounded in, in fact or, or evidence. But if they said, well, I have, you know, I've, I've consulted with 10 different real estate agents and they've provided me with a professional opinion and I want to submit that under the record for evidence. Now you've got evidence in the record that says, this is probably going to decrease property values. So you're going to have to deal with that and you're going to have to address that in, in the record. So.
Say that there was a group and they got together a broker's price opinion. So they've got one, you know, broker that's saying this might reduce your property values. Would we then allow the developer? I mean, they should be countering that. They should have
Sure.
multiple real estate documents saying, you know, it's not, it's factual.
That's, that's, that's kind of how quasi judicial hearings are supposed to work. This side alleges this, what do you say? And give you, give that person the opportunity. And then, and then now you're going to find yourself in a situation where you have the warring of the experts. You're going to have 10 real estate agents over here that says, no, this is going to have no effect. This, that, that's the purpose of making a finding of fact. That's exactly what I'm trying to point out here is you've got evidence from, from one group that says this is going to have an impact on property values. You have evidence in another that says this is not. Now you have to decide which one do you believe? And which, and then you, and when you say, we adopt, we believe this side, then you adopt that as a finding of fact. And this is where your reasoned statement comes in. Why? Why do you believe this one over that one? And, and articulate that reason why.
So there was a call out in here in the analysis that the Boise, Boise City Code sufficiently sets forth express standards for obtaining a CUP. Do we have express standards?
Yes, we do.
I've never heard it in that vernacular before, so I don't know what the, is that our five things that we're looking at?
So, yes, you have, so you have one entire section that is lengthy of express standards of approval. And, and those are.
Those are things they have to meet to even bring in their application.
Nine dash five dash three. Those, those are not subjective standards. They have to check that box in order to proceed to the next, to the next, really to proceed forward.
We don't even spend a lot of time on this.
Cinda really shouldn't be putting it in front of you if they haven't met those requirements in the first place. What, what this, what you're referring to in the case, what I'm pointing to is the nine dash five dash two, which talks about, here's how we are going, the more subjective standards. And these are express standards of approval. And, and maybe some modifications to the ordinance where we could maybe break that out more explicitly so it's clear. The, the reason to have express standards of approval is because an applicant as well as an affected person should know what the criteria is for getting a permit. It should be easy to find. You should go to the ordinance and say, here's what, here's what to expect.
And if they need it, you know, we have to have a really good reason to deny that.
They got into a pretty big fight over using language very similar to what we have about whether or not it's too subjective, like an undue adverse impact on government services. You know, what is exactly an undue adverse impact? The court basically said, no, that, there's always going to be some subjectivity to this. These are appropriate standards and they didn't have, they did not have a problem with the way that Boise City had articulated their, their standards. I, I would like to see it instead of it kind of all cobbled into one paragraph where it looks like it. I would like to just see it broken out into, into those five, five additional standards, but.
I would like to make it so that it's just, it's not so gray, you know, for people. I mean, it, you know, in the city of Boise, they got themselves in trouble because they had a goal of, you know, four minutes to a fire station or whatever. They were so detailed on their goals. And, you know, maybe we don't need to do that, but I just think that people need to be able to look at our ordinance and go, they're either going to get approved or they're not going to get approved if they meet these bases.
Yeah.
Yeah, there still can be some disagreement there when we're looking at stuff. But people need a little bit, in my opinion, I think we need to strengthen them to where people have more of an understanding upfront.
Yeah.
You know, on what the basis for that decision is going to be. It's not arbitrary.
And your, and your big, your big issues are usually going to be impacts on government services. Are we growing faster than the fire, than the fire district can keep up with? Or are we growing faster than what the road department can keep up with? And so those are, because those are going to be, those are going to be, and you see it not just here, in every county that I'm, you know, in touch with that, those are kind of been their big issues when it comes to land use. And so whatever we can do to encourage, you know, our, our fire captains and sheriff's office to, you know, submit something in writing or come to these public hearings and give a, give a, an explanation for, you know, how they're, how things are being handled within their current budget and the, their system that will.
We're going to change.
That'll help.
We're going to change the wildfire. A lot of the wildfire information, building codes and building requirements and the areas, you know, whether you're extreme fire, what you have to do differently than if you're in a low fire. A lot of that's going to help strengthen those types of conversations also. I think that that will help individuals, I mean, a developer's going to know what things he has to do in excess if they're in an extreme fire danger area. I think that's going to help the conversation as we move forward.
Yeah. The, I, I think the take home message from these cases, and they, they're citing back to 2006. So they started kind of getting, sending the signal that the decisions coming out of governing bodies need to be, need to be done differently than what they were seeing. But there, there's always been this overarching judicial philosophy that, that they don't want to substitute the judgment of the courts for the governing bodies. Best, that these governing bodies know better, you know, how to develop approve applications in their county than the courts ever will. So they don't want to, they don't want to intercede. But I think it got to the point where they just said, okay, now if it's not, now it's almost outright hostility. They're saying, okay, if you're not going to give us a, an adequate reasoned statement where you have resolved the disputed facts that were in the public hearing, we're not going to do, we're not going to guess. So we're just going to deny it and you're going to have to do it over again. So.
I think we do need to do a better job with countering, if, if a decision is to, at the planning and zoning, is to deny something, we override that. We need to do a better job of why we overrode that decision.
Always, always a good thing to, to give a, a pretty detailed explanation for why. Because now, again, in the Boise City case, there's an ordinance that says that a difference of opinion isn't, isn't enough. That you're going to have to find specifically that they did not follow the ordinance correctly and, and point that out.
Oh, yeah. It really should be anyway. And if we have, on either side, if we have a group that's making a decision based on personal bias, they shouldn't be on that board. And so if we have somebody that's denying every application because they don't want it, they shouldn't be on the planning and zoning. And, you know, on the flip side of that, we as commissioners, we have to follow our ordinance. We follow our ordinance, we keep ourselves out of trouble.
Yeah.
And so if it's a, an emotional decision, that doesn't.
Bias for or against shouldn't, shouldn't not inter, interweave itself into the decision. You got to look at, really, you got to look at the people who are testifying at the podium and the applicant that's testifying at the podium and the information that's submitted. And then you got to, you got to resolve the disputed facts and then you got to apply that facts to your criteria. And if they meet the criteria, it should be approved. If they don't meet the criteria, it should be denied.
And we need to document why they decided that it met the criteria. At least we are in writing. Because what I really heard in these two cases, especially the Interfaith, was, you know, they had 100,000 pieces of paper and a page and a half of facts conclusions. And they didn't want to have to go dig it out of the record.
The court said that in both cases, we are not going to do your homework for you. If you do not explain to us in sufficient detail why you made the decision you made, then don't expect a good outcome. Huge record, I mean, I mean, Interfaith, they, I mean, they took three or four years. They hit the pause button. They had a, a, a working group in the middle of all of that. I mean, you can imagine the, the paper that they had compiled. And I think they had 10 or 12 hearings on it. So that's a lot of hearing time. So that, so they were working hard on it. They were studying hard where they just felt short was in their, in their written decision. So.
So go to the next conclusion. So now it's been remanded back to district court. And district court will remand it back to the city. So do they start all over again?
Yep. So the, in Interfaith, the remand back to district court was with specific instructions to basically nullify. So the procedural history was, it's an interesting one. Planning and zoning denial, county or city council approval. The district court agreed with the city and authorized the approval. And then at the Supreme Court, they lost. So Supreme Court's going back to the district court decision saying, modify your decision approving the city council. So in essence, the Interfaith Sanctuary has got to reapply.
So do they just go back for the reasoned statement that they're missing? Or do they have to go through the whole process all over?
In Northwest Neighborhood Association, that was the instructions from the court, was just go back and give us a reasoned statement for why you have a goal in your comprehensive plan for four minute emergency response time and there isn't enough explanation for why this is approved when it's, it doesn't seem that you're meeting that. And so basically that goes back to the city. They re, they reevaluate that, they resubmit their written decision. And then whether or not that gets, I mean, you could go back to judicial review again and, and start that fight all over again. With Interfaith Sanctuary, Arnie, help me on that one. I'm, I'm kind of blanking as to what the court. With Interfaith Sanctuary, um, Arnie, help me on that one. I'm, I'm kind of blanking as to what the court instructed him.
So they concluded that the decision to grant the CUP was arbitring, which is based on unlawful procedure. The council's reason statement was inadequate. And the CUP Department Association suffered prejudice to its substantial rights. We reversed the district court's decision, which was affirming council's approval. Remand with instructions to invalidate the actions of the city council.
Yeah. So they basically just invalidated the approval. So a little bit different than Northwest Neighborhood.
Could the city council then take it back up? It just said it invalidates their actions, but it doesn't deny the application.
Um.
Or is that?
I don't, you know, I don't know. It probably depends on the city code and what the, what the code allows, if they would require them to reapply or they could take that back up again. But Arnie reading that just reminded me a couple of things that, that I wanted to tell you guys too. I have, up until this case, um, the case law had an interpreted the uh, substantial rights being affected by the affected, in this case, it was Northwest Neighborhood Association. Substantial rights usually had to include some type of, of a real, of, of a real injury. Like you had, uh, your property values actually were, did go down or there was some, there was some actual harm. Uh, the case here said, if you're, if you don't follow the right procedure and you violated the due process rights of the neighborhood association, that's enough to meet the substantial rights threshold. So they.
That was my next question.
They have, they have lowered that standard to if you, if you have not followed the process in making this decision and, and the, and error was made, that meets that requirement.
And due process rights are.
Yep. That is, that is a substantial right. So it's, it's, it's not a really high bar, uh, to, to meet necessarily.
So, oh, so if, let's just say planning and zoning denied something and then it comes to the commissioners and they say, we don't, that the planning and zoning didn't detail out enough why they denied it. Would you recommend to still hear it or remand it back to P and Z to further go into their?
That's a good question too. Uh, another thing that the court clarified in this case is that when it does come up on appeal to the board, it's not a de novo hearing. It, you, so.
What does de novo mean?
Hearing it all anew. And I'd, I'd, I'd previously understood it to be that. You have a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission level. They make their decision. You come here, you have a public hearing. I've, I've recommended or I've advised in the past that that's a de novo hearing, basically meaning we're, we're starting over. Whatever happened at the planning and zoning level doesn't matter because we're restart, we're starting over, we're, we're hearing this all anew. We're taking new e- evidence or information. This case basically says you've got to account for what happened at the planning and zoning level. And you have to a- address it. So that's why I'm now telling you, if the planning and zoning decision outcome is different than what yours is, make sure you have a, a, an explanation for why you feel.
That's why we've never really worried about it because we thought we were just starting fresh.
And that's the first thing we have to do, correct? Is explain why.
Yeah, but you're.
And find what, of error of the five grounds specified by the code P and Z didn't, because of all of them.
Yeah. And I, we're talking just hypothetically, but when you have an additional public hearing at the board level, then you're taking new and additional information that the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have the benefit of. So that can be your explanation for why. Is that the information that was provided to us that we found persuasive was not available to planning and zoning. And if, and if it was, then, then maybe the outcome at the planning zoning last level would have been different. Or, or you may just find that, uh, they didn't follow the, they didn't follow the ordinance the way that you feel like they should have followed the ordinance. So they made an incorrect decision on one of the criteria, uh, standard criterias that they may have found that the, have way too big of an impact on government services and therefore they denied it. You find with the additional information available to you that, uh, it can be conditioned. And, and this is where I think people get confused, especially, especially the public at large, is that we're not talking about some universally, universal level of undue impact on government services. That's the, the, the whole purpose of having a condition of approval is we recognize that they're inherently incompatible. We say it in our ordinance. That's why we have a permit requirement and that permit is going to require conditions that will minimize the impact. And so those conditions are important that you can bring something that would be otherwise incompatible down to an acceptable compatibility level uh, for those conditions. And that's what you're, that's kind of what you're searching for in these public hearings and in your findings of fact is what is it that we can do to mitigate the impact and condition this down to make it compatible in the neighborhood? In Interfaith, it would have required a security plan from, and then from that security plan, the city council could have said, okay. In addition to that, we want, we want this, you know, whatever, you know, this condition, this condition and this condition to be imposed on this. And, you know, they, they were talking about limiting the number of beds or they were going to have some, some other things that, that they were debating back and forth as to whether or not to require those or not. So. Okay. Have we exhausted our?
I have one more question. Can the Board of County Commissioners, sorry, Board of County Commissioners, appeal a decision of the P and Z just because they don't agree with it?
Um.
Can we be the appellant to a P and Z decision?
We need to change the ordinance in order for that to happen, but I would recommend that, I would recommend that we do change the ordinance because I think it would be very appropriate for the county commissioners to take up an issue. Uh, take up an issue on their own motion. But right now our ordinance does not contemplate that.
Or have been a couple of things.
There's been a couple of times where.
Would have, either put some stronger requirements around or.
It's, that's a touchy subject though. I think you could have an overuse of, or an abuse of power.
Yeah.
Can the P and Z appeal the decision of the Board of County Commissioners?
Um, no. You have to be, you have to be either the applicant or an affected person. And they're not, un- unless, well, if they're an affected person, they're, they've probably conflicted out, so they're not participating. So.
I didn't have a P and Z commissioner appeal a P and Z commission decision.
A P and Z commission's decision? Oh, wow.
That is fun.
A, a minority vote, obviously.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would think it would have to be something quite, um, where we were liable or something for the board.
Right.
Directly in P and Z. I don't think it should be used frequently.
Yeah. There's some, eh, there, there's some, there is some independence of the Planning and Zoning Commission, obviously. However, they do, they're appointed by the board. They're, you know, kind of, uh, serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners. So there's a kind of a subset of.
Then one final question. These two cases are really similar. Are there any other cases in front of the Supreme Court right now that are maybe on the side of the, um, the applicant or?
There, so I'm not aware of what's pending. Uh, there has been a, there was a Twin Falls case in 2024, which is also a good one. If you're interested in looking at that, I'll get you a copy of it. Uh, again, that was, that was about a fire response time and, uh, having two, two entrances and exits for emergency, emergency exit. Uh, the, the, if I remember right, the outcome in that case was the, uh, the decision to approve that subdivision was actually, uh, okay with the, with the court.
I just think it'd be interesting to read all side, you know?
Yeah.
A case that.
I'll, I'll send that one out, uh, read them and, and we can visit about those if you, if you have questions about it. But again, you'll see when you do read that, Justice Brody has authored two of these opinions. I thought for sure it was going to be Justice Brody on this Interfaith, but it wasn't. Um, she was pretty critical of the, of the written statement there too. They said, eh, you just barely, barely convinced her that it was, uh, it was going to pass the judicial test. So.
So now that we have these, are we looking at our ordinance? Are we looking at, you know, some of the comp plan language to strengthen or amend?
Sure can. I think, uh, you know, what I would, what, what I, what I would recommend is what I said earlier with those, uh, um, criteria that's in nine dash five dash two, to break those out just for convenience. I mean, that isn't a big legal issue. That's more a convenience of the reader to easily find it. Uh, here's what the, here's what the criteria is. Um, we can certainly, I mean, we've got the comprehensive plan is, is being evaluated for the area of impact. Um, issue there. I, I don't see major legal issues with your comprehensive plan, just, just that. Just like in these cases down in Boise, if you have articulated goals there and, and evidence in the record that suggests you're not meeting those goals and you're still inclined to approve it, just make sure you have an explanation for why. That's the, that, that's the downfall. That's what.
That's what we have you for. So back to your point, Sherry. Historically, the board made sure we didn't put express standards in the comp plan. They left a little more vague, like you were talking about, instead of saying, yeah, there's a goal for four minutes.
Yeah.
That's what.
That was pretty specific.
Tried to do in the past.
Yeah.
Um, and yes, we are going through the comprehensive plan right now and I hope to do a mass ordinance amendment after that to implement that plan.
See, I think the, the Northwest Neighborhood case would have been different if the written decision would have been a little bit more explicit and, and more detailed because they had, they actually had the Boise Fire Chief back like a second time to explain and testify what the agreements were and whether there was a, a formal agreement or not a formal agreement in his opinion, whether or not they were going to be able to meet the, the four minutes. And the testimony was that he was comfortable that with the cooperation of Eagle, Eagle Fire Department, they could easily meet the four minutes. So there was, there was evidence in the record. It just never made it into the written decision that said, we're comfortable approving this because of the testimony of the fire chief. And if they would have done that, I think the court would have said, okay.
I think we need to look at our process and on when we get the information for these large, um, subdivision. Uh, we're going to have to spend a lot more time on the documentation and on our process. So if we don't get them, you know, if we leave open that comment period until like the Thursday before or whatever it is.
Yeah.
We're not having, we don't get enough time to spend just reviewing this type of thing and documenting it. And I mean, I can spend hours.
Yeah.
Trying to document this stuff. And so it's really not fair to the commissioners, whether I'm up here or not, to have one work day, you know, prior to these big hearings. So I think we need to.
Try to get it back to Doug on Wednesdays.
Yeah, but we don't get our packets until Thursday. And so I think we need to back it up a week. Like we need to cut off public hearings or public comments like the week before, and then we get our packet on Thursday or a week out.
Yeah.
So like a couple of weeks ahead of time?
Yes. So I think other jurisdictions do that, you know, I mean, they need, we need more time. That's only fair to the applicant. It's only fair to the people that are here that we get the amount of time we need to make a good decision.
It would, it would seem like we could get the application that far in advance. I mean, if it was just public comment that came in at the end or something, that would be fine.
Yeah, I, I can do that.
The thing that was impressive with the procedure that was handled down in, down in Boise was they, they took their time and I'm sure it was with some pressure from the applicant to move faster than they were moving. But they took the time to say, we need more information or we need a security plan or we need to, the Boise Fire Chief to come back and talk to us about this response time, schedule another public hearing to, to address that, handle that. Um, they recognized that, um, you can, you can rush through these things a little too fast and end up with it. Uh, what's the saying? Shortcut always leads to the longest road. Uh, that, that seems to sometimes be the case. So if you, if you take, take some extra time to get all the questions that you have answered and enough evidence that you feel comfortable that you can make the decision, then your chances of surviving a, a lawsuit go up substantially.
And then we also need to be better about just saying, we're not ready to make a decision today. You know, that we give ourselves more time to go back in and even after deliberation, before we make those decisions, go back and research everything and put everything together.
I, I hear it a lot. I'm sure Sinda hears it incessantly that developer wants to get an application through during the winter months because the summer construction season is shorter here than it is down in the valley and they, you know, it's, you know, it's, gotta have, we gotta have a decision one way or the other, um, before the snow melts. Well, that may not be practical. And, and so we need to, we need to make sure we set reasonable expectations with everybody involved that if these are complex applications, they may take longer than, than.
Well, we've had applications, you know, that have taken five years.
Yeah. And, right. And, and.
And got it at the Supreme Court. A few of them, yes. Um, one thing I want to address and not today because we're out of time, but I've been reading in some of this about hearing examiners and when we might want to utilize a hearing examiner, you know, if we have conflicts, especially that one's new to the board. You know, if we have conflict between planning, zoning and this commissioner, whatever is a hearing examiner or appropriate use, but.
Well, aren't hearing examiners in place of a P and Z commission?
Well, I've heard of them, using them.
Or is that an arbitrator?
No, they, um, so, I mean, it depends. Uh, the, a, a hearing officer can be very, very valuable. For one, uh, usually you will, you will, it'll be an attorney that is the hearing officer. So they're going to understand and know how to, how to, you know, resolve factual disputes and fol- follow the procedures and stuff like that. And so that may be an option. I know Blaine County uses them a lot. I've used hearing officers in my prior employment and they were very valuable just because they can, uh, they can do a task that's going to take a substantial amount of time, freeing up the director to, to do other things that was required of her. So, um, and the hearing officer's decision doesn't necessarily bind the board. The, those are, they're basically advisory decisions or recommendations. So basically how it works is the hearing officer will conduct the public hearing, collect the facts, make a recommendation. And then the board can say, yeah, we feel like this is appropriate. We'll adopt this. Or they can say, no, we don't like this decision. We feel like he got it wrong. We're gonna, we're gonna, you know, so there's, you're not completely giving away your decision-making authority, uh, if you do appoint a hearing officer. So if you're interested in doing something like that, we can investigate that and, uh, you don't have to do it with every application, but maybe, uh, one that's, you know, going to be extremely large and very time consuming and.
So instead of the P and Z or between the P and Z and the board?
I would think it would be case specific.
Probably, yeah, it'd probably be case specific, but I would think that you would want the hearing officer involved in, right from the very beginning of that application, if you're going to use one.
Because I've known them to be as a P and Z commission function versus taking everything to the P and Z commission.
Yeah. And I think Blaine, I think Blaine almost uses a, a hearing officer exclusively. I'll have to ask.
Wythe County only uses them. There is disagreement just to make sure that they have covered all bases.
Uh huh.
Um, and that might be a time, you know, of the.
Yep.
Have a different decision in planning and zoning or something like that. You know, I don't know.
The, the state is.
When people are using them.
The state has created the Office of Administrative Hearing. I, I wonder if we could, I, I don't know if it, if they're available, if they're solely, uh, used in contested cases in front of state agencies, but, uh, they have trained professionals. But, uh, they have trained professionals that do that.
It's in loop.
Why we had some extra time because now we're out of time and need to move on to our executive session. So that gave us a little more time. Um, let's take a five minute break.
Madam Sherman, can I inquire, Arnie, can I have a copy of the handout that you presented in order to hand that to my meeting minutes?
I would like one too.
You can give, there's that copy.
Just the slides?
Uh, and your, um, yes, your outline of potential recommendations for the.